Thank you for attending this meeting of the South Burlington School Board. I see many people, many more than we usually see at a meeting. I have reason to believe that many of you are here for the presentation and discussion that's going to be done concerning nutritional services. Some folks already have had an opportunity to speak with the board about this, and since there are a lot of people here, I would ask if you have spoken before that when we get to that item that you not speak, at least until people have not spoken and had a chance. And I would ask David to pass around a sign up sheet so that in the, between now and when we get to that item on our agenda, which won't be long, we have a sense of how many people want to speak, and so we can make a decision about whether we're going to need to limit the amount of time we can offer people in order to stay within some reasonable limits on our agenda, because we do have another, a number of other things we have to do tonight. But it's an important subject to us, we've already planned to devote substantial time and attention to it, and you can be assured we will do that. With that, I will turn to the subject of other items, that is comments from the public on matters that are not on our agenda. So if you're here to talk about nutritional services, not yet, but if there's something else that you want to talk about that's not on our agenda, please feel free. Okay. That takes us to the fourth item on our agenda, which is an update on the current status of the Howard Center's permit to open a methadone clinic, and I'll turn to the superintendent for that.
Sure. Thank you, Rich. I want to just provide the board with an update on the current status of where we are with the methadone clinic. As you know, we filed a motion, appeal notice, on January 30th. We have sent copies of the notice of appeal to all of the interested persons identified by the zoning administrator. We have also, as of the 15th of February, we filed a statement of question along with a motion to stay the DRB's decision, and that's the current status where we are present with the methadone clinic.
Can you explain that that brief will be online at some point?
Yes, and so, as Martin just indicated, the information that we have filed is public document, is a public document, and it will be available, it will be available under the school board tab for those of you who would like to read it.
All right, thank you, Martin. Thank you, David, and I'll just, just add that it's obviously too early at this point for the court to have ruled on our motion for stay, and the other side has time to respond to it, and then presumably some, a judge will take it up and make a ruling on it. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is the superintendent's report, and the board has the report and has had a chance to look at it, but David, if you could perhaps summarize some of the items, particularly for people from the members of the public who don't have it or haven't had a chance to review it, that'd be great.
Sure. So I've, I identified three items in here that I just wanted to bring you up to date with. As you said, Rich, I've given it to you in written form, but let me just kind of go over these quickly. The public school choice situation currently has had a concern or has brought attention to South Burlington in that the way we have had dollars following students, and we've been the recipient of a good number of students, these are, these are agreements that we have with four, three other high schools, and so currently that is being looked at and hopefully resolved. We hope that the letter that Armando Villaseca, the Secretary of Education, has sent to all four superintendents, basically indicating that we should be honoring the agreements that were set forth in Act 150. In addition, Act 129, which opens up additional choice options, however money does not follow students, is currently being discussed in the legislature, and my understanding, and I've seen the draft bill, H. 269 is out there, that provides some specific language to money following students. So I want to thank, our legislators have been working and listening to us, and I think it's pretty clear that they have some positive outcomes currently happening. Number two was budget communication update. For those of you who don't know, we've been out kind of trying to connect with as many folks as possible around our budget and communicating. Actually, there is one going on tonight, actually Stuart is, Stuart Weiss is doing the Chamberlain PTO meeting tonight, and we've been reaching out and doing a wide assortment of communications. Some of you board members have done those as well, and I appreciate whether we're manning a table and making sure information gets out. With that note, I will say that there is, at the table, there's our one-page flyer that's out there. All of this is also available on our website, under kind of our little graphic of the vote sign, the red, white, and blue vote sign, also on all of our websites. So again, a reminder to everybody about the March 5th voting day, and obviously information and voter registration, absentee ballot information is all available to you on our site. And then finally, just the communication survey, some of you may have seen that, actually posted in the other paper, that information, we want to provide you with more detailed information about what the findings are of the climate survey, and we'll be doing that on April 3rd, so we welcome everyone who might be interested, that have had, has had a chance to read it, would like to talk more about it, to come April 3rd. And that is all I have, Mr. Cassidy.
All right. Are there any questions about the superintendent's report? I just would observe that as a result of David's advocacy and Pat Burke's advocacy, we did get a letter from the Commissioner of Education about the subject of school choice legislation and the money aspect of it, and I did not know, a point that the commissioner makes, which is that South Burlington High School is the only high school in the state that is a net receiver of tuition under the present system, which, I, I, you can't, you can't hear me, I will try to speak up, thank you. Okay. So the fact that we're the only net receiver is, reflects well on the system, but also indicates our legislators have a lot of work to do if they're going to change the, change the system back to the way that it was before. The next item on our agenda is our report on nutritional services, and I just want to introduce this report by saying that making appropriate nutritional offerings available to our students is a high priority for this district and has been for some time, that we are aware of the importance of the, of good nutrition to students, not only in terms of their ability to learn, arriving at school ready to learn and staying ready to learn, but also in terms of their, their, their lifetimes as adults. So we know that it's an important program, it is a program that has, has had, suffered from financial distress in this district, and that's been the major portion of our charge to the superintendent to respond to that financial distress, because it is set up as an enterprise fund, which means that it is intended that the program would be self-supporting, and the, the numbers show that it indeed has not been self-supporting. So that's the, a brief introduction to what we're talking about tonight. We will do this, this part of our agenda in really three pieces. There is a report that's been put together by the administration for the board that we'll begin with, then we will have an opportunity for public comment on this subject, and then the board will have a discussion about where we are and where we're going. And so that's the way we're going to proceed. When we get to the public portion of the meeting, I would ask that people understand some guidelines, but we'll talk about that when we get to that piece of the meeting. So with that, let's begin with the administration's report, and since it looks like it's going to come over my shoulder, I need to move.
That's right, and so, just a quick introduction to Winn, Goodrich, and again, I'm very appreciative of the, all the hard work that he's done to pull this together, both internal and external folks. We've talked a lot about this, we've done, he's done a lot of work, I've actually, I've pulled some things back and pushed some things forward, but I'm happy to have him here presenting information to you, the board, about nutrition services. So Winn.
Well, thank you, and very appreciative to see so many individuals interested. Three quarters of the room were actually either on an internal or an external, think, tank team, and lots of other folks with additional interest as well. The internal team, if you hear me speaking about that, are all of the nutritional services staff. The external team involves individuals that have expertise in business, in food preparation, food purchasing, parents, business leaders, we had a student on that team, our farm-to-school coordinator was on that team, both kind of did separate work, and then we brought two bodies of research and work together, and you'll see some of the, you'll see the recommendations that emerged as, as a result of that. I'm just going to start with, the board gave us a charge, I believe it was back in November, maybe even sooner than that. We actually started the work in November, and it was, it was based on five directives, and one is to, to deal with and evaluate the deficit and how we might change that. The second one was comparing South Burlington to other districts in the region, to create a break-even plan, to hire the expertise that we need, or to bring on the expertise that we need, and to identify a couple of options. And so I'm going to work through tonight, the board actually had more slides than what I'll be sharing here, because we wanted to cut right to the chase and get at the, get at the issues. So what we did is we analyzed the deficit history, we looked at funding assumptions. The two teams I spoke about, we hired Steve Marinelli, who's sitting in the front row, and will speak after I finish, giving some explanation on the plan that we move forward, what the finances are. Steve is the successful food service director in Milton School District that has transformed that program in a year and a half, so we're very happy to have him with us. We researched staffing patterns, we looked at outsourcing, one of the charges, or one of the interests of the board, and I think in any research, you need to look at all options, so we looked at the potential for contracting out, and I'll share with you some facts and figures about that. We looked at menus, we looked at food quality, and it became blatantly obvious early on that this wasn't just about money, that there's an interrelation between school quality and money, and they both have to work together, it can't be simply just finances. We looked at expenses and revenues, and we looked at reducing the use of processed foods. The factors that contributed to the deficit were curricular and program changes that caused staffing increases. An example, breakfast program, when you add a program in five schools, it creates more labor, that's one of the, one of the drivers. The assumption that the Nutrition Service Enterprise Fund could be self-sustaining with fully benefited staff. We looked at the projected deficit, what really caused this, and we're talking close to a half million dollars. These are the factors, it behaved itself before, but it's not behaving itself now, so I guess I won't go there. Anyway, I'll just leave this slide, here it is. No, it's not. Well, anyway, we'll move right on. Maybe we won't. Let me go back. So that's the, that's the deficit that we're looking at right now, but I had, just have to clarify, the bill collectors are not at the door breaking it down saying, "You haven't paid your bills." It's already been paid, it's just, it's a, it's a, an accounting issue, and the auditor has directed us to change how we do this. So I just want you to know, they're not going to be carrying any of us off tonight, it's, it's an internal issue. One of the charges was to create a break-even plan, and if we continue forward with the same assumption that this is a fully self-supporting plan, we've identified management efficiency improvements over a four-year period that would accrue to $370,000. Student and staff participation increases, and here's where the interrelationship between quality and cost come into play, and it's about increasing participation of students and increasing participation of staff that make these changes. And we have built into the program and the assumptions metrics that we believe will move that, and it's been, it's been proven in Milton that they, they were successful at that, we believe we can be just as successful. When we did the analysis, one of the charges was to look at area districts, I'm only going to show you three, but we had six or seven. Burlington augments their, their food service program with about $300,000 in benefits and $175,000 in cash. Milton, $100,000, but they, the director's salary and benefits is paid out of general fund, and in as in Northeast, this last, this year, budgeted $106,000 to augment the deficiency between revenue and expenses. So the districts around us are not self-supporting. What we learned is there's a strong correlation between school wellness culture and curriculum. We often, as often as we can, connect health and physical activity, sustainability, food service, mindfulness, all together in what we call the Wellness Collaborative, so that's really what that first bullet is about. Research linkage between eating healthy food and increases in student performance, we have some research links, the end of this PowerPoint, that speak to that. And the other one is, there's a strong body of research that shows that the chemicals that are in industrial foods have a strong correlation to what's happening with the increase in asthma, Asperger's, allergies, and ADHD. And so we really need to be paying attention to what's happening in our food source moving forward, and I'm not talking about just school food, I'm talking about food in general. So really need to be paying attention to those, those issues. In addition, child obesity and hunger, we also learned there's a very strong correlation with farm-to-school and local foods movement. Over 200 schools in the state have farm-to-school coordinators or programs. We also learned an inconvenient truth, that there's a wellness policy, but not everyone follows it. Nutrition services does, and they, they implemented changes a few years ago that cost $120,000 of loss of drink sales to not sell high-fructose corn syrup, drinks, sodas, those kind of things, and there are a few places in some of our schools that are still doing that. We have bake sales, we reward children, students with food, so really need to look at that wellness policy and how it interrelates to not just nutrition services, but the whole fabric and culture of our school. I'm going to now introduce Molly Silver, Molly is our farm-to-school coordinator, and she's going to talk with us a bit about how to connect the school board and school district ends and the relationship to food service and nutrition services. Molly?
This is Winn. Hello, board, thanks for having me. What we are really here advocating for is keeping our momentum going. We have engaging learning opportunities that are emerging that deal with the model of the three Cs, so what this is, is the classroom, the cafeteria, and the community, that all need to be on board and participating to have these, have these relevant and engaging experiences for our students as they're learning in our district. Keeping our food service enterprise internal keeps the door open to keep building on these experiences that many of the students here who are present are experiencing right now in the room of classes. We use tools right in place, right on our own school campuses, to be learning how to think creatively through the academic curriculum, and we have gardens at all five schools as of last year, so students at every school in our district are learning in place in their own gardens. We have students taking curriculum right outside into their garden here at the middle school, planting seeds, learning life skills, but also tying it into their traditional academic standards. So the complexity of our industrial food system requires a multidisciplinary approach, we need to be learning it through all of our subjects that we're teaching in school. We have current curriculum going on right now in South Burlington in grades K through 12, and so students all over our district are learning about food, and they're learning about where their food comes from, and just opening the doors up for questions and for inquiries, which is what we're asking our students to do. For example, in the elementary program, we're in the third year of food lessons in the classrooms, and so the students are learning the harvest of the month in partnership with Common Roots, and so they started, in the beginning of the program, they were asking, you know, "When are you going to bring in strawberries, when are you going to bring in watermelons?" And now they're pulling me in the hallway trying to, trying to get more parsnips and more parsnip fries in the classroom, and they want that because now they know what parsnips are, they had no idea before, and so we're giving, we're giving them the opportunity for these experiences that they might not get at home, or they might not get anywhere else, because most people don't know what parsnips are. And they're learning what eating seasonally is and what, what that means to our, to our environment and our community and our state and our health. These little guys learned that if you harvest carrots in December, after a few frosts, they'll actually taste sweeter. So, so it's science, and then they've got their hands in the dirt, they're loving being outside, and it's in December, and we're harvesting from our garden outside the classroom. So the major part of this, and how this ties really into the cafeteria, is that we need to be consistent in what we're teaching our students and what we're serving in the cafeteria. How we have this congruence between what's on their tray and what they're learning about in their very classes is critical to how we, how we model this consistency. So these students that are eating this butternut squash in the cafeteria at the harvest meal, they harvested right in South Burlington, and they may not have eaten the squash if they didn't feel connected to it, and so they're trying new foods right in the cafeteria because it's all part of the same connected system that we're building upon. And then we have these wonderful high school students in our new class, Sustainable Foods, and they're learning about the realities of the industrial food system, and we're integrating them right into our own community need, right in our high school kitchen, so they come down as a part of their academic credit and learn life skills, knife skills, from our very own wonderful staff member, Jack. So we have a chance now to demonstrate socially conscious decision-making and model that for our students and for our greater community. How powerful is it that students graduate from our own high school with the knowledge of making healthy decisions around food, understanding the implications, both, both personally for our personal health, but also economically, and then additionally environmentally for the health of our, of our land and our community? So it's just a multifaceted way that we can teach our youth to meet our ends policy goals and also to live for a sustainable future.
Thank you, Molly.
So continuing on our process, we hired Steve as a consultant to work with us, I think he spent a little bit more time in South Burlington than he or we ever thought that would happen, but that's fine, because he's just been absolutely what we needed to be able to have that expertise. We also received a lot of support from School Nutrition Association directors from around the state, in particular the Chittenden region. Molly and I went to a conference, and they just banded around us, and they provided about two hours of just free consultation on what they're doing to be successful, things that aren't as successful, and so there's a real support network of folks interested in this topic. The board asked us to create a, a plan, a break-even plan for this year. Fortunately, we can't do it for four years, but I'm just telling you that we have a spring plan, it shows $130,000 of gains in revenue or diminishment in, in labor costs, I'm not going to go into the spreadsheet behind it. The recommendations, some of the changes that we're making is we're opening back up CAF III, we're going to be doing a deli bar, the salad bar, and a frozen yogurt machine in CAF III, we're going to have daily pasta bars in the high school cafeteria, that tends to be a very popular meal, and again, this is about participation. We've changed the à la carte breakfast and have sizable gains, and one of the benefits of not doing à la carte, it's great to have more choices, but we don't get reimbursable federal funds for à la carte, we do for, for whole meals, and so not only is there a benefit for the whole meal, but also financially. We're looking at, rather than doing vending machines after school, to do snack packs for athletes and other individuals in co-curricular activities, it's like a beehive at 320 in the high school, they just migrate to those machines. We feel we can do better with snack packs, both from a health standpoint as well as financially. Bag breakfast in the lobbies, a no cash kiosk at the high school so that we move students through the high school line more quickly, and inviting grandparents, parents, and citizens to lunches, does a number of things intergenerationally as well as financially. Our 2014 deficit reduction strategy, some highlights, unfortunately, to be able to do this without any augmentation from the general fund is going to cause us to, to reduce the number of full-time nutrition services staff. I just want to say that's been a very difficult issue for folks that have been working in this field for a long time in this school district, and I just want to go on record and recognize that nutrition services staff have worked very closely with us, and they have a lot of stake in these, these outcomes. We brought both teams together, and we're in as good a place as we can be right now making those kinds of hard, hard changes. The yogurt machine has the potential to generate a lot of revenue. It won't be a full $30,000 in net gains because we have to pay the lease. Catering, we're going to expand catering, we're becoming a member of the food buyers group, and the rest, we're going to be renting out kitchens, so that's a piece of what 2014 strategy is like. Changes in job descriptions and training, matching the nutrition services, the new director's skills with a new mission will be a key factor. Some of these things I've already talked about, we're going to be preparing more of the elementary meals in the elementary schools. We'll still be doing a little bit of trucking, but we feel like we can provide fresher meals with, with those products and the equipment that can be handled at the elementary school. Also, we make a lot of meals from scratch, but this cuts down on the number of meals that we can produce per staff hour, so we're really looking at that metric, and we'll be making changes here. Here are the new goals for increasing some of the participation, right now we're about 50% of students in K-12. By boosting that 5%, we generate these kind of numbers, but big numbers in breakfast. So in 2014, increased revenue from participation, a bit over $100,000, in 2015, another 5%. These are consistent with what Milton is experiencing, Milton went from 30-plus percent to 66% in, in a year or a year and a half. We feel we can do the same kind of thing, so we're not just, you know, putting out figures, we're grounding those with some experiences from a neighboring district. Increased staff participation, the more staff that are in our cafeterias, the more likelihood that students will be there as well. And I'll let Steve speak to that when he, when he talks in a moment here. We have a, a staff plan, the staff plan cuts in half roughly the benefited workers, and there's an income and expense piece that I'm not going to go into here, but the board does have that in the package. We looked at the Abbey group, in a comparable presentation, Abbey is a consulting group, they're one of many, so we did not refine that, it was just at a proposal level, and they gave us rough figures on what they could come in as an outside contractor, we compared that to what we could do internally, and it's our recommendation that we keep it internal because of the control issues and the other opportunities. We may not show quite the revenue, but we're also going to have more benefited staff, so there's a balance here as we move forward. Our recommendations, we show that we can make, we can operate in the black with an additional $32,000 each year, at least in year one, and we think more in year two as the program develops, and again, Molly talked about the three Cs. This, I think I've addressed, one of the other additional recommendations is to include summer food, senior citizen meals, and after-school sales, as well as expanding catering. And the conclusions are, we have many very talented nutrition services staff here, we also have equally talented individuals in the community that are very willing to step up to the plate, and many of them have, and we really need to, to change the tide of the fact that the next generation is slated to not have the same life expectancy as their parents, and that's a sad tale, and part of that's in food, and it's not just school food, it's food in general, it's environmental issues, and so at that point, what I'm going to do is conclude- And so at that point, what I'm going to do is conclude my remarks. I'm going to introduce Steve Marinelli. He's going to talk with us a little bit about kind of the Milton story and go into a little bit of depth as far as what they've done and what we plan to do here. Steve, thank you for being with us.
Thanks, Win. Good evening. Boy, if school nutrition was this easy, huh? Well, a year and a half ago, I was hired as the food service director at the Milton School District. I've been in food service for well over 30 years, and I've been in school nutrition for well over 15 years. As I started in at Milton, they asked me, "Boy, we just want some different options, healthier food." And I said, "No problem." I said, "I'm good at that." So we brought in healthier food. We stopped bringing in a lot of processed foods. Our participation started to go up, but boy, our ridding started to go up as well in school board, administration. Everyone started paying attention and says, "What's going on?" I said, "Well, you just asked me to provide good food. That's easy. So let's look at the whole picture." And sure enough, staffing issues, paying a lot of benefits, this all came into play. So we worked very hard. We worked with our groups, and we made real difficult changes. They weren't easy, but they were the right thing to do to make a sustainable program. Year and a half later, we run in the black. As Win said, my participation is up, and we have a fantastic program. But I sit there and I think, and Win asks, "Well, talk about the successes." And I said, "Well, that's successful. I finally make money, you know, get the school board off my back, you know, things going well." But that's not the story. It really isn't. Three weeks ago, I got a call from John Perron, my superintendent. He said, "Steve," he said, "we've got to have a celebration. Can you put some food together for the faculty?" I said, "Sure. What's going on?" He said, "We just got our kneecap scores back, best ever in Milton, and a lot is accredited to the food that's being served in our cafeteria. That's success, and that's what's important." And so I started thinking about that, and that's what I want to share tonight. It's that we'll make the tough decisions. We'll move this forward. You guys got a great team in place, and you guys are paying attention to nutrition and what it means to your students. So I started thinking, and I think about Cheryl. She's worked in the district for 17 years, and she was scared to death last year, didn't know if she was going to have a job, didn't know if she should take a buyout plan, a lot of tough decisions. And she says, "Steve, I'm only 55 years old. I want to stay and do this." I said, "Okay." So I said, "But I'm going to challenge you." I said, "Our breakfast program at the elementary, middle school is not good enough. I want you to be aggressive. I want you to change what we're serving. I want you to just change the way we're doing things. Let's do breakfast in the classroom. Let's get more kids to participate." So she's, "All right, I'll take that on." So about November, she comes up to me and she says, "You know, Steve, out of 17 years of working in this district, I finally like coming to work." I said, "That's awesome." Then I get my reports in January, from the beginning of school in September to through December. With her help, we served over 10,000 more meals in our middle and elementary school. That's success." So I kept thinking. I said, "You know, really, what is, you know, we can talk numbers all night long. We can make that happen. But real success is what we provide to our students, what they put in their stomachs, how it relates to them in their classroom, and how our staff and faculty perceive what is going on in our kitchens." So I started thinking about John. John was a student that came in last year, and he'd always come in, "I want a favor." And I said, "Okay, John." So I'd have to make him a special bagel sandwich. And I'd do this off and on. And about a month into school, he comes to me, he says, "You know, the only reason I come to school is because you pay attention to me and make me some breakfast that I enjoy." A year and a half later, he comes to me yesterday, and he says, "Steve, I got a favor." And I said, "Oh, I can tell this isn't breakfast." He says, "No." He says, "You know, my favorite teacher," he's going to school every day now, "my favorite teacher's last day is Friday. Will you make me something special that I can give to her to thank her?" Now that's success. So I just want you guys to understand that it takes partnerships, commitment, and trust. And, you know, I look around this room, and we have nutritional services here. We have parents. We have faculty members. That is partnerships. I have people here from Hunger Free Vermont, the Agency of Education. Those are our partners. I'm also the president-elect of the School and Nutrition Association. That's partnerships that will build this program and move it forward. And so commitment, there's a commitment to the school board to do it right. There's easy ways to get out of this, but to do it right, it takes a commitment, and it takes the time and effort to make it. And it's, you know, I've spent more time at school board meetings promoting what I need to do and want to do. And sometimes they look at me and they're like, "Steve, you're nuts." I said, "I might be, but it works, and it has worked." And so then it comes to trust. You've got to trust that this is going to work and let it move forward. It's going to take time. It's going to take energy. There's going to be bumps in the road, but it does work. And then finally, I was lucky to have Molly come up and spend the day. She called me Monday. She says, "Steve, I see you've got a vegetarian day." She said, "I'd like to see how that works." And this was at my high school. So she came up, and we were talking, and I said, "No, just kind of observe the line." And so the kids come in, high school kids, they never read a menu anyway. So they just come in, "Oh, what's for lunch?" And I'm like, "Oh, falafel and black bean burgers." They're like, "Huh?" I said, "Yeah, it's good. Okay." So they go through the line, they get their meals. And at the end of the day, Molly says, "You know, that's really remarkable. Those students walk in your door, they don't care what they're being served, they just have the trust in you. They know it's healthy and it's good. That's success." So I look forward as an S&amp;A member, as a child nutrition advocate, to help you folks move this forward. I'll be there any step of the way you need, because I just look forward to see this same success happen in South Burlington. Thank you.
Before you finish, Win, I just want to invite members of the board to ask you, Win, or Steve or Molly questions, if there were questions that the presentation raised. And I don't know if there are any. I'll just leave with one, and that is, I noticed that almost all the other districts, apparently all the other districts are subsidizing their programs in this region. And when we looked at what Milton was doing, it looked as if there was a $100,000 cash subsidy and Steve's salary benefits.
No, that's the one and the same. It just looks different, but it's really the same principle.
Can I just make a clarifying? I have a clarifying question. Win, you said something about us not running a deficit prior to moving retirement benefits into nutrition. I don't think that's accurate.
It's not. It just exacerbated that condition.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
A couple of questions for Steve. So when did you have this big increase in participation? I want to just kind of understand. I guess what I want to understand is what effect the new federal guidelines had on participation. Did you get that increase in participation despite having to have more whole wheat and other issues that one might have with those guidelines?
We had very good participation. It all started last year as we initiated the program. And then I think that's a great point, is that the child nutrition guidelines changed at the beginning of this year, and there was requirements for more whole grains, less proteins, and it really caused a big stir. And participation levels around the country went down. We luckily in Milton stayed pace with that. A lot was due. I put fruit and veggie bars in place in my schools where kids had access to all the fruit and vegetables they wanted. And so that was very successful to offset their lack of some bread or maybe some proteins they were getting. And then they were relaxed. As people know, they relax those guidelines right now, so we're kind of back to normal for this year until they decide what they're going to do. So we didn't lose much at all in participation this year comparative to last. And I'd also like to mention about my salary being brought into the general fund. That was something that we worked towards, and I think looking forward as you look for a director and stuff, I think those are responsibilities that have to be met by a director to make them an administrative leader, and I think that would make your program run better. So if you decide ever to transfer some funds, you've got to transfer the responsibilities along with it. And there's a lot of responsibilities that do go with that.
Questions?
Yeah, I just had a question about, you know, what was the thinking behind making it sort of an enterprise program and not subsidizing from the general fund?
Way back.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have the long history. We in this district have two enterprise funds. We have a schools-out program, which is our after-school program, essentially at all of our, all three elementaries and our middle school. That's a program that we have. In addition, we have our nutrition services. You know, way back, again, it was because it was outside, I believe, to the best of my knowledge, because it was outside the, you know, the educational specific charge of the district was to set up an enterprise fund so that it would be able to run, you know, and be articulated appropriately. John, I don't know, do you have any additional?
Well, from my accounting standpoint, it's fees paid for services. And so it's separate from funding of education, providing a free and appropriate education for all. It was, fees are specified. They can't be used to pay for things outside of food service. So that's accounting-wise.
I think the other part of that is that over time, and I think, you know, this was alluded to in the presentation, although not specifically, over time, again, what's happened in the district is that there's been a migration of making schools out and making the nutrition services whole and identifying all of the costs associated. In my time here in the eight years, you know, we've pulled over additional components that were not being charged to nutrition services or schools out. And so that's added the, you know, to the picture. It's added pressure to the bottom line.
I'll just address your question a little bit. It goes, I can tell you that it goes back further than my service on the board, so that means this will be my 12th year coming up, my 12th anniversary. I think the philosophy behind doing it this way is so that you understand what's happening and you make conscious choices about a program that is a little different than your basic classroom instruction program. So from my perspective, philosophically, it doesn't necessarily mean you don't subsidize the program, but it means you make a decision, a conscious decision about whether you're going to subsidize the program. And I think if you look at the way data was reported to us from a lot of other districts, a lot of districts are not really doing that. That is to say, they're not clear about whether they're subsidizing their program, which I think makes it hard to make good choices. But I'm sure other people have a different philosophical view. Other questions?
Yeah, follow-up question. So there are no costs that are part of the nutrition services that go to education, or are there? I mean, nutrition services, from what you said, John, I don't know exactly how you put it, but it's, the nutrition services enterprise fund doesn't have to do with education. It's just feeding kids.
I just meant that we shouldn't be paying a PE teacher from money collected from parents for kids' foods. That's how it's set up.
Okay. But are we, but from what I understand from the presentation, we are providing education through nutrition services, and is there a cost associated with that?
The farm-to-school coordinators pay through nutrition services.
Okay, so that would be considered more, I kind of look at it a couple of different ways. I know they merge together, but one is getting nutritious calories into the kids, and the other is the educational component. And I see the enterprise fund making sense certainly for getting nutritious calories into kids, but not necessarily having to bear the burden if that could be an identified cost. I mean, that's, it's kind of along the same lines of what do you subsidize? So I guess the question is, I mean, is there an estimate of what the cost is for the educational component of nutrition services?
I can speak to that. It would be roughly in the three years we've done farm-to-school, in the range of $60,000 to $70,000.
Annually?
No, total.
Total, okay.
Win, go ahead, David. I mean, I do think, you know, one thing that's important to me is that we've been able to get to this level of detail as a result of clarity of purpose on expenses within nutrition services. And it's been difficult because, you know, we've loaded nutrition services over the years because we've put on additional requirements to make it pay for, you know, to have all of the costs associated. The subsidy issue, if the board's desire and direction down the road is to say, you know, farm-to-school because it intersects so significantly with curriculum, then that could be a subsidy from the general fund if, you know, the board wanted to do something like that. But again, I think for this presentation, it's been shown, you know, within the nutrition service line.
And I'm just trying to separate those components.
Yep, I agree, totally agree. Good question.
There's one other issue that I think makes sense here. It's not part of nutrition services, but I'll tell you that Common Roots puts food educators in elementary classrooms, so there's another education component that's going on, but it's not directly connected to nutrition services. We have a memorandum of understanding relationships, so we know the roles, but that's also going on.
Right. Go ahead, Julie.
Was there a time in your tenure on the board, Rich, when nutrition services was in the black?
There was? Yeah, absolutely. There has been years within the last, you know, my time. We've had a couple of years where we've had, you know, to the black. I think, you know, I want to be careful here because was it fully, you know?
Was it fully loaded?
Was it fully, you know? So it is what it is. I guess, you know, on the other side, if we were operating where subsidy was being provided over the last, I'm going to just say 12 years, you know, at whatever amount from the district, general fund, then obviously you'd have a different story to tell as well. So again, I want to be clear about that. I mean, we have provided the board in the past, in my past, information that had nutrition service in the black. Answer the question. We'll get to.
We hear you.
Oh, yeah, here. I know. We really, we have to give some more amplification for you. I'm sorry.
I'm asking if you can repeat the questions because they can hear the questions.
Oh, sure, okay. Can't remember the question. The question I always ask was whether during the time I've been on the board, nutritional services has ever been in the black. And the answer was yes, which you heard my answer, I guess. Sort of.
Sort of.
Sort of. I also want to point out that, you know, the board has given a charge to the administration, and to some extent, that charge may call upon us to make some decisions that may inflict with other values that we have. And one thing that I heard is that one of the things we would need to do to save some money here is to reduce some benefited employees to a status in which they would not have benefits. And I just, one thing that I know from reading the materials I want to make clear is that it's not the recommendation of the administration, as I understand it, to lay anybody off, that this would come through attrition if this occurs.
Correct.
Okay. So I do want to make that point. And I think with that.
I do have another.
Yes, pardon?
One of my favorite subjects, metrics and the ends. There was a lot of talk, Molly primarily, about how the nutrition services helps in meeting the ends. Are there any metrics that are being developed? I'm not expecting to see them right now, to show that in fact what we're doing with farm-to-school nutrition services are in fact meeting the ends or helping us meet the ends. Are kids eating more parsnips by high school would be one that comes right to mind. But I mean, are there any metrics in development to show that connection? But I mean, are there, are there any metrics in development to show that connection?
What I would say, and I'll let you speak to it too, Lynn, I think having a direct line to a specific end outcome would be difficult at the present time. And so what Martin is asking is a good question. We have four ends, academic, disposition for lifelong learning, personal development, and citizenship. And what can we attribute from nutritional service being provided to students and the good nutrition could help indicate progress on those ends? And so, I mean, certainly academic, but that's, you know, being funneled from both classroom, curriculum content, instruction, as well as other services. I think nutrition services obviously plays a part in that. Dispositions, decision-making. So I think we have our work to do to say of our ends, and there's more detail to our ends than I'm giving you, but which ones would be specific in our time now and time future that would be specific. And again, our classroom teachers and support people would need to be able to help us with that. But Lynn, I don't know if you have any other adds to that, or?
I don't think so. Molly might though.
Just wanted to mention that as we kind of have been starting these initiatives and going deeper, just looking at the school district as not just the individual classrooms where students are interfacing with their teachers, it's more, we are looking at providing consistency both in the classroom and everywhere else that students are involved in our district. So being able to see that what they're learning in their classroom or with their teachers and with their role models around food or food education or sustainability or systems thinking is being followed through and everywhere else that they're experiencing in our district, so both in our cafeterias and in our kitchens and however else they're involved with us. It's not just their classroom interface, it's everywhere.
And I, you know, I absolutely agree with that. I think that there are so many other situations. Again, our majority of our time is spent in our situation, educating children in the classroom. In addition though, we have these other experiences that happen while in the hall, while out in recess, while they travel in co-curricular and music and all of those other things. We have, you know, our exchanges with all of our other staff, nurses, you know, et cetera. And that is an important component to that. But specific to your question, Martin, can I put it, can we put a specific, you know, metric to, here's where we are now in this area and here's where we hope to be, and being able to say with 100% clarity that it was related to, that is probably going to be a stretch.
Well, yeah, I mean, our monitoring of how we're doing to meet the ends still is not always looking for that 100% connection. It's as well as we can, as long as we are trying as much as we can to have measurable progress towards our ends and attribute it to where we are spending our money.
Absolutely.
And that's kind of what I'm getting at, that we don't lose that.
I'll just add one thing to that. We're in the process of implementing the Center for Disease Control Health Index, which will give us good baseline data upon which we can build down the road a deeper understanding of did it make a difference or not. And I'll just finish kind of this part, looking at this three Cs, and I think about what marketers say, it takes three to eight exposures to motivate, and if children hear it at home, they see it in the community, they see it in the classroom, and they see it in the cafeteria, that's four of the eight. And the more times they see parsnip fries and understand that they might be good for you, the more likely they are to turn that into a habit over a lifetime.
Lynn, can you just give us a little more information about the index you talked about? What kind of, what kind of data are we gonna be collecting?
We'll be assessing in each of the schools, based on the CDC, there's a profile, it's being offered around the country. I'm working with the nurses right now to get that implemented. We went to a workshop at the Hampton a couple of months ago to learn more about it. That's probably as deep as I can say right now. It'll be assessing wellness policies, curriculum, culture of the school, and I think it will fall in very nicely with the question that Martin is asking here.
With that, why don't we turn to public comment? Some of you have been very patient, and we want to hear what you have to say. I do have a relatively small number of names on our list, so we'll go through those names. I don't feel the need to impose a time limit at this point, but we would ask you to bear in mind that we do have other items we want to get to tonight. So the first name is Nancy Heller. Nancy, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Sure.
There you are.
Hi. My name is Nancy Heller. I'm a South Burlington resident. I'm a mom for South Burlington kids. I've been involved with the food issue for over 10 years here in the South Burlington Food District. I've sat at the table with administrators quite a few times about this issue. I hope you choose to go with the internal route here. We have made a lot of progress over the years, and it would be really sad to see backtracking happen after a lot of thoughtful and hard work. People that are really caring about the kids in this community and people that really understand how important food is and how that affects education. I think the question you had earlier about how can we show, how can we measure what food does for our students, for their academics, for their learning, you can't really. It's just like you can't show what sports does for students, you can't show what being out in the environment does for students. But you know, more and more, how important these things are for our children, for our culture, for our world. And it's there in front of us for us to read, to look at. People are, people are working hard on these issues. And to think that we here in South Burlington in a fairly well-off community, educated community, that we would try to keep with a plan that's, to me, outdated, the break-even plan. When we're trying to make conscious decisions about how we educate our students and how we take care of our children in this community, we have other people around us, other communities that are spending money to pay attention to this. Why is it so important for our South Burlington School District to hold to that plan? So I encourage you to go internal, keep it internal. If we need to come up with the funds as part of our budget, I think you have people to back you in this community because they know how important food is. I ask you, would you think about changing the athletic program to break-even planning? Would you be willing to pay for uniforms, for transportation, for coaches, for staff in order to have an athletic program here? Does that make sense? Why are we doing that with our food, with the important health issue of our children? Thank you.
Thank you. The next name on our list is Jill Reinhardt, Dr. Reinhardt?
Hey, I'm Jill Reinhardt. I'm a community pediatrician with Dr. Sagan and Conley in the south end of Burlington, and I'm also a parent of two children in the South Burlington School District who are fifth and seventh grade now. I think in my role professionally, I'm on the state chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the board, executive board there. I have close connections with the Vermont Department of Health and have consulted with them on these issues too. And I want everyone to know that these are issues that should South Burlington School District choose a vendor, it causes these ripples in the professional communities of those of us who care for children in a different capacity. And this is a really, we're all watching this, you know, from within and from without. It is clearly, as Nancy said, a step backwards to move into these types of choices. And when, especially when we see such creative designs that have been, I think, I think of it more of like an esoteric stuff, we're talking about, it's so beautiful, we're talking about teaching kids about carrots being sweeter in December, and I'm just not picking up that cupcake, you know, in the office. But they complement each other so beautifully. And to think for me professionally that suddenly this thing that I've taken for granted would be gone is tremendously sad. So I'm much more encouraged now by hearing this dialogue that things are moving and that we have the support to keep nutrition as a centerpiece to, of healthy food. We don't have to prove, I don't think, that nutrition helps kids get better test scores. I don't think you have to look at the metrics on it. That's really, I think, established well in the literature. But what needs to be supported is that this idea of the collaborative nature between school, food, and classroom work. And that's where the research is now being done, and we're seeing all kinds of positive outcomes from that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Sagan. Sabrina Milbury, Sabrina? There you are.
There I am. I'm Sabrina Joy Milbury. Thank you, Winton and Molly and all the other people who have worked so diligently on this. I actually was the person who first planted a garden at Orchard School. Orchard School has gardens. They have gardens because I said so. And I actually personally, with the assistance of the teachers at Orchard School, introduced many, many Orchard School children to the wonders of growing their own veggies and their own flowers. I introduced a whole fourth grade classroom to Brussels sprouts, which when I first told them we were planting them, they went, oh, gross, disgusting. And when we harvested them after two frosts, because that's when they're the sweetest, they ate them raw and they loved them. And what I discovered in the whole process of being with these kids is that food is actually much more than just putting it in your body so your belly feels full. It's really about educating the mind and the heart and the soul as well as the body. And we have come so far here in this district in moving to really good food and making connections and putting our money where our mouth is. You know, we have these beautiful ideas and all these like 1.13s or whatever those are, those standards, right? And they say these things, but if we are unwilling as a community to actually put our money where our mouth is and make those connections, then we are teaching our children that we are liars. And I, for one, have always been committed to telling my own daughter, who went through this school system, the truth. No matter what, I'll tell you the truth. Food is important, and it's important for our physical well-being, but those connections that the children make when they are rolling around in the dirt and I got them laying on their bellies inspecting for bugs, those connections go far, far deeper. And for us to go backwards, we are actually doing a disservice to the children that we say we are committed to. So I encourage you as a board to do the right thing. Thank you.
The next name on our list is Kendall Loomis. Kendall, are you here? Yes.
Hi, everybody. I don't exactly know how to follow that up, but I'll try. My name's Kendall and I live in Burlington, and I was a natural resource planning major at the Rubin State School. So we focused a lot on food systems and natural resources in general, so the linkages that we're talking about. I currently manage the South Burlington Farmer's Market. I did that last summer and will be here again this summer when it starts up, and I'm working on it now. And the way that I think that that ties in is kind of going back to what Lynn said, talking about the points of contact. And you folks have four, probably more, in the school, and we're trying to create one with the farmer's market as well. I was just on a webinar last week talking with people about a program for students and elementary-age students out west, bringing them to the market and giving them buying power, so helping to change the buying movements in the market through the kids directly. And I've been talking with the people here who advise me for the market, and we're gonna try and implement our own version of that here as well. I just wanted to say that we're doing our part as well to bring the nutrition and the education and make it really fun in an outside setting as well, during the summer, during the off months. And I think it's, again, really important to go with the internal choice for providing really healthy food to the students so that everything that everybody's trying to do with the education is backed up when they go to eat their lunches and dinners and breakfasts. Otherwise, there's a disconnect between what they are being taught and then seeing the proof in the pudding. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name is Heidi Boncher. Heidi, are you here? No? Heidi Boncher? No? Okay. Chris Felicia, I think it is. Chris?
Chris Felicia.
Felicia, thank you.
I have three kids in the South Burlington school system. I really enjoy the South Burlington school system with the farm-to-school program. I think it's excellent. I think that we are moving forward and teaching our kids, or actually taking it back by moving forward, taking it back to a time where, you know, some kids in other parts of the country, they don't know where potato comes from. Potatoes come from McDonald's. A carrot comes from the grocery store. Our kids know where their food comes from. Comes from the ground. I planted it. I brought it home. It's delicious. We need to be funding that more. Now, in this day and age, nobody wants to spend more money, more money, everybody's trying to pinch the pence. But these things can be made sustainable, sustainable, excuse me, by focusing more attention to it. You know, a farm can kind of grow on itself and actually produce for itself and produce a revenue stream. So we can be growing our own food, feeding our kids, and putting money back into the system. Also, the thing with the labor, you're never gonna get that. A kitchen needs a good head chef. I believe, what's his name, Steve? I'd almost classify you as a head chef. You know, a kitchen needs a leader, somebody that can manage the budget, plan meals on that budget, and still make them good. I really can't follow the other thing, but that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Chris. That completes the list of people who signed up to make public comment. Is there anybody else who would like to make quick public comment? Yes, please identify yourself.
I'm Irene Sour. I'm the kitchen coordinator at the high school, and I wanted to address Martin's talking about the ends policies. This year, I had over 20 students come to me from their PWA class and talk to me about things they cared about changing in the school. Can we sell bottled water? Should we be selling bottled water? Should we be doing nutrition things? All different projects these students care about. Now, for them to pick the kitchen over every other project in the community, I think that's pretty impressive. And that was 20 students in one semester. And I also want to speak to Steve, talking about the kids. We put new menu items on the menu, and I have kids come through the line and they'll say, well, is it good? And I said, well, I'll give you a sample. And they'll say, no, you don't need to. We trust your opinion. And those are the kind of things that I think are important, having kids in the school district and working at the school, that are so important. So I think there are measurable things that are happening in the school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now I get, oh, yes. Yes, please identify yourself.
Hi, yes, thank you for recognizing me. I'm Stephanie O'Brien, and I'm a member of the community. I participated in the effort that went forth today. And just a couple of things, there's many, many passionate people that were engaged in this. And as a long-term member of the community, as a business member of the community, I felt it was important to play a little bit of a devil's advocate in the room, to really drill down on the numbers, to really take a look at efficiencies and measures that are going on. And I just want to articulate that the group was very thoughtful in answering the questions and getting down and bringing the data in and bringing the two groups together. It wasn't an easy process. It took a lot of time and energy, and obviously, whenever you go through a process like this, it creates a lot of anxiety as well. So I'd like to just, first of all, compliment the administration for taking this straight-on, head-on, bringing the proper people within the organization and the proper people outside and within the community to really come together. And I'd also like to tell you what a pleasure it was to work with Steve. He has been sort of labeled as a consultant, and I would like to sort of try to trump that term a little bit because... because he's actually a doer. He's done it and he's had success in it. He is not just consulting about it. He's actually living it, practicing it, eating it and breathing it. And that really brings a lot of credibility, I feel, to this process because it truly is a measure of how it can be done. And it is being done. And my just, my final thought on this and as I think about it, it is exciting, I think, right now to move this effort ahead. And one of the things that I would like to urge the board to do and to consider doing is to implement this as quickly as possible in some of the recommendations that are being made tonight. I think it's important. I think there's good energy. I think the community has been engaged and involved. And you're really talking about a community enrichment center here. You have created a community involvement and movement. And it would be wonderful to continue to take that energy and take the momentum and build it forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. But who need a last, if I had to reserve some time for my board to talk about this? So go ahead.
Okay. My name is Austin Erickson. I'm a senior at South Burlington High School. And I would like to ask if you are a South Burlington High School student? Stand up. And we are here because we are very grateful, the care and commitment that South Burlington has shown to this education for nutrition. We have a new class this year, called Sustainable Foods, and we've been learning a lot. And we're here because we support consistency of internal system of sustainability and nutrition for students. So, if you just want to, I'm the board chair.
Thank you, Austin. Okay. We have some recommendations in front of us. I just sort of glanced through them and asked myself this question about them and that was whether they require board action. I don't think they necessarily do, although the board certainly could choose to take action, connection with them. Is that your read, David? This is within your ability to do the things that you've recommended to us?
Yeah, I think, you know, on the bigger side, it was, this was really getting back to the desire, the board having some specific questions back actually September to take a closer look at this and providing you with the opportunities and information.
Okay.
So, I don't think it was a needed action, although I think there needs to be a specific direction, you know, that you are okay with us to move forward with.
Correct. Members of the board, comments, questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make, I wanted to clarify the discussion about metrics and what I was looking for, given some of the comments from the audience. Yeah, I don't question that getting nutritious calories into kids helps. I mean, you said this by way of introduction. And I think that is very important. And I think there's, one doesn't, I don't think have to measure, have a direct measurement of how well we're doing on kneecaps to how well we're feeding the kids, although it sounds like in Milton, that was probably there. It's that we're doing more than that. We're doing more than just getting nutritious calories into our kids or trying to do that because not all kids will eat no matter what you put in front of them. We're doing more and it's kind of the extra that I'm kind of look at. And that's kind of what I saw in Molly's presentation. It wasn't just a matter of calories. So, I think that's the metrics that I'm interested in because there are different ways that we can get calories, nutritious calories into kids. And if this is the way we're doing it, we should be able to show that it's hooking up to our, to our ends.
Well, I can't not take the opportunity with such a large audience here to say a little bit about this board's interest in metrics and say to you this. We're not talking about a yes or no situation, whether, you know, having nutritious food is good for kids or not. I mean, as Martin said, we know that. But, but, but trying to take a look at what we are doing in terms of metrics provides us with a real opportunity to measure the performance of the district and continually move in a better direction and know if we're not moving in a good direction as well. So finding those metrics isn't always easy. And finding the right metrics is, has been really a challenge. And we have a long, long way to go with respect to that. But we are very interested in finding some ways to, to see the results of the resources that we put into kids' education in this district. And that's a commitment this board has had. I hope it's one that will continue. Other comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that what we're doing is so far beyond the cafeteria. It's extending into the community. It's extending into our classrooms, the whole education piece. And I would like to just, I would like to understand more about the connection to the education piece and the general fund. And if we're talking about this role, this person as an educator that's connecting to our ends and is just reaching out in many different places, I just wonder if, if we should be including that position in our education, general fund area.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, as we move forward in the construction of a new budget, hopefully after a budget, you know, on March 5th is, is we hope approved, I think that those are, those are going to be questions that you are gonna charge me with to say, given what we are currently doing, given what we want to do for the future, what elements should be included or excluded? And certainly, when you have a conversation like this, as we look at food education and the crossover between what might be happening in the classroom and curriculum, those may be discussions that, that we enter into. Again, at the same time, we know we have challenges also that are upon us, you know, as a community around how we do our work and how appropriately we staff our schools. And so those are, those are challenges, but also opportunities. And so I would just say that, you know, that's, as a result of this good work, it will remain in the consideration for the future. And, you know, I think we can, we can debate whether or not this is within Nutritional Services with, with kind of a dotted line to curriculum or if it goes over into the general fund and has a dotted line over to Nutrition Services and, you know, and where the subsidy may go, you know, whether it's within or whether it's subsidized from the general fund. So, I say we'll keep an eye on it and I'll come back to you with recommendations on how we continue to have moved forward, not just in Nutrition Services, but in moving our, in advancing the work we need to do with students.
I also had another comment about the points of contact and, and families. And obviously, there are a lot of parents here that are very involved in this process and have participated a lot. And I, I think part of this is changing a culture of eating. And how do we involve families? And how do we do that in a way that respects family values and ways that people eat and have traditionally consumed food? And, and they're being asked to sort of change. And how do we respect and honor that as we're doing all this other work?
I guess, I think, again, fair question. You know, we, I think this has often been some of the challenges, successes, struggles, you know, of what we do in Nutrition Services. And that is, you know, we have kids for a period of time and we don't necessarily have them when they go home or in the summers. But again, I think the activities that we're working on engaging with our community garden projects, with, you know, the things that are happening with Schools Out and the Farm to School Initiative, our work with Farmers Market, again, that's kind of having our, having that space on our property, I think will begin to continue to transcend to say, wow, there's some direct line correlation. But, you know, bottom line is, we aren't in, in the kitchens of every, every mom and dad and guardian at home. If we can only hope that we can influence decisions by kids, you know, through the conversations that you've heard around how we, how we move them. And make, make available resources, you know, such as those healthy parsnip fries recipes, you know? So there's, there's opportunities for us to continue to, to think about ways to reach out. And I think you heard a lot from, you know, folks, you know, tonight. But certainly, those are, those are areas that I see we can be mindful of.
Carol?
I would like to just extend, because I think you're right on the ball that it's, you know, it's not one thing Diane is gonna really address, how we connect with parents. But I'd like to use an illustrated, an illustration from Orchard School, which was not rocket science, but, you know, five years ago, our spring fling was pizza or hot dogs and Coca-Cola. And that has been a transition, working with teachers and parents and our PTO who's, who's really understanding that, you know, a spring fling can be a healthy meal. So we're modeling within these events. And for example, at our Harvest Festival, there used to be a bake sale. And, and we basically said, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna put fresh food out, nine classrooms prepared the food. Lots of parents connected in the kitchen and other UVM interns, et cetera, with common roots with our Sustainable Living Committee. So I think beyond the vote or whatever you decide tonight, I would like to suggest that the board help us think about what Wynne referred to in the presentation around a policy that will help to educate the families in concert with the changes that we're making so that we can be more congruent, whether it's the vending machines or the events or the, the bake sales at community gatherings. So I don't think it's any one thing. But I think if the board charges, you know, the teachers and administrator and a team to work under the Wellness Collaborative to make some policy changes, it will support Nutrition Services and it will be an education tool. So it's very doable, what you're, what you're asking is, you know, it's how we stop smoking and, and how we got to helmets and seat belts. We're small, measurable efforts in the community. I think we can help get that done.
So that raises a concern that I picked up in the course of reviewing the materials for tonight's meeting. And maybe Wynne or David can answer this concern for me. But I gather that we don't sell soda in the cafeteria, as I know that, but that there is soda being sold in the buildings?
That's a rumor that goes around.
Well, I mean, but what's the, what's the truth?
The truth is that.
Yeah, I think- How does this happen and what's going on?
Yeah, and again, this is part of the culture and change that has happened. And I would say we've made progress on this, although Christine would say, David, you know, there's been times where, there's been times where, when we're serving, there's certain, you know, either machines are on, which is a statement of, you can't have that happen as, under the real strict guidelines. And then what we've had in the machines has not always been appropriate. And one would even challenge that, that they're still there. And so, these are often filled with, you know, by boosters. So I would say we've made progress. We need to continue to make progress in that line. In addition, we also have bake sales, you know, bake sales that come into our schools. Again, where Christine and her staff in five schools may say, this can't, you know, that we can't serve this here. But then there's a celebration that might go on in a classroom with something that's in direct violation. And so that's a delicate balance too, because bake sales are a part of the connections that we want. But at the same time, can we have healthier bake sales, right? Can we have, and I go back to menus, you know, whether they're things you can buy or things you can bake that are healthy. That's some of the work that we have ahead of us, to again, educate, inform and tell them that you don't need to have that in there. The kids like this, go with this. And so, we've made progress. There definitely are some opportunities still available to us.
So, so it's not, it's not specific enough for me?
I didn't think it would be.
Who sells soda in our buildings when?
I actually don't know when, but, you know, some of the vending, are there sodas?
Would you please?
The booster has a vending machine that is a Gatorade vending machine at the high school that is open till 8:30 in the morning and it opens again at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is it Gatorade, Irene, or is it soda?
It is soda.
Soda.
It's a Gatorade vending machine that sells soda.
So, again-
Also, the concession stand sells.
So at events, yeah.
And I hear that, yes, so.
And I also think we need to be careful about what we serve adults and what we serve students. So that if, if children do not have soda machines, adults shouldn't either.
So again, what you're hearing, board, is that we have work to do. I think you heard this in the report. We've had work to do. I would say we've made some progress in this area. But there are some deep rooted things that we have to continue to work. With your direction, with this work, you know, the move forward is, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta be harder on this. So, again, a perfect example is concession, right? And I'm not gonna say what the items are necessarily, but people often go to an activity, sporting event, et cetera, and there's kind of a staple of foods that one would think.
Yeah.
So, we have to be, you know, we really have to be able to respond to and communicate, you know, with our public, you know, not just our, our, our students and our parents, but those that come from afar and within our community to see those things. So, I mean, we have, we have work to do.
I just want to pick up on the connection between something you just said and what Diane said earlier about being respectful. And I think bake sales is a great example of that. I think we, we have to be reasonable about what we're doing. We don't want to be rightly accused of being, of going overboard. We can encourage people who are participating in bake sales to, to, to move in a direction that we're trying to move in. But I would feel very uncomfortable with saying, no, you can't, you can't, you know, bring standard food items to, to a school bake sale if you're a parent or a booster. But I do think it's a little different when we start talking about vending machines and what we're gonna allow in our buildings. And I would urge administration to take a close look at that subject.
I, I hear you. I think the other part of this, just to be clear, is that, you know, it's not just about whether it's, what we would say meet the nutritional guideline. There's also some pieces in here around food allergies, right? And so when you think about the regulation of the responsibility of us as at the school, we get into this. And I, and with our, our nursing staff who've been diligent and pointing this out, certainly to me in the past and I believe Wynne too, is that, how do we handle this? And so when you have these, and Nutrition Services as well, how do you, how do we handle this? So there are, you know, there are definitely, there's work ahead. There's education. And again, I think with this closer look and direction from board, you know, we're, we're gonna take our marching orders from you and, and I'm gonna dig in a little harder. And there's been really good progress made, but we have work to do.
If I might just add one, sometimes it takes a paradigm shift. A lot of schools are going away from bake sales and they're sponsoring fun runs. And rather than promote food, you promote exercise and kids raise money per mile. So it's a paradigm shift sometimes that gets that solution done.
Or other activities.
Right.
Are we done? Because I'm not done.
No, we're not done. We're not done. And I, I actually want to sound, what may sound to some like a bit of a discordant note, but isn't really intended to be. It goes back to what I said earlier about my view that, that the idea of this being an enterprise fund is to be sure we know what we are doing so that we can make good and conscious decisions about it. And that's my view of, of why this ought to be an enterprise, has been an enterprise fund and ought to be an enterprise fund, which I don't think means that we might not choose to subsidize it. However, in the last four or five years, we have not been choosing to subsidize it. It has been choosing for itself to be subsidized and that, I can't support. I would also say that as I look at the numbers, I am not convinced that we're, we're gonna have a self-supporting program starting this semester by any means. And so I think if that was the board's charge, I'm not sure that it's been now. I see some changes that I think will save some money. I hope will generate some more revenue, but I'm not sure that, you know, I think. And we are interested in that. And we're interested not because we're, we're trying to be difficult, but because we are, are in a situation where we're going out to the voters and asking themselves to raise their property taxes 8%. Well, we cut our expenditures $800,000 and lay some teachers off. So this is really serious stuff for us because we don't lay teachers off lightly. And that's the budget environment that we're operating in. So with that, I don't know, Julia, did your questions relate to that? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I first just want to say thank you all for being here because it's infrequent that we have this many people. it, it's infrequent that we have this many people, and some of you are first timers, I think, at this meeting, and that's great. A lot of you are, a couple of you are regulars. Um, what, and what I'm, what I'm gonna say might not be that popular, and, and I'm sorry about that ahead of time, um, I will tell you that we have, one of the hardest things about being on this board is that we have a bunch of different groups coming to us all the time that are very impassioned about what they're talking about. And all of those things usually cost money for us, and choosing amongst those things is very difficult, I think, for all of us. Um, and with that said, I just have to, I have to say, I think all of us feel like nutrition is really important for our children. Um, and I, I think you were, you said you were gonna talk about the outside proposal, and I think it's our job as, you know, just doing some due diligence to understand about the proposal, especially when it shows what looks like a profit to me when I look at it, um, in a case where we have a big deficit and we have people coming because we're cutting language in some cases, and they're upset about that. And our job here, I think, from my perspective, is educating students, and when we're cutting curriculum, we have to think about all the things we're cutting. So, um, I, I just at least think we need more information about outside sources. Just my, my opinion.
Certainly, and do we-
Certainly can, again, you have that information, and we can, we can bring that back, you can have the opportunity to look at that information a little bit more and ask some questions. Again, it was, um, it was really a, what I would say, a very rough proposal, Winn. I'm probably not choosing my words quite correctly, but a rough, that's fair, estimate, an estimate, uh, that was provided, so.
Um, and also, you know, when your plan address is paying down the existing deficit, it doesn't look forward to potential deficits that will-
No, and it does.
It does?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see that, but-
We, just to cut to the chase, the outside proposal shows sixty, sixty thousand dollar positive rev- revenue number.
Mm-hmm.
And next year, our proposal shows thirty-two thousand in positive revenue. So from dollar to dollar, we didn't show as much, but we have a lot more staff, uh, that are benefited, so that's a thirty thousand dollar balanced position.
Right.
So, so the, the revenue, that comes to the school, the sixty thousand?
Yes.
From an outside prov- okay.
Right.
And your assumptions that you made, um, in, in relationship to the increase that you'll see in the future, can you tell us how you made those assumptions? Cause they're pretty big increases, based on your current performance.
Uh, it's primarily based on participation. We're showing over a hundred thousand dollars of revenue gain next year, uh, given a five percent increase in participation. And again, it's built on the Milton model. Uh, and we show an additional five percent in year two, which would be FY fifteen. And that, that would take us to sixty percent of our students. Right now, we have roughly fifty percent. And I'll take it there, but that, that's the, that's the number. And that was based on, uh, some of the principles that Milton used in the types of food, in the marketing of food, uh, the promotion of that by teacher participation. So those were the, were the key areas that showed revenue gains.
Thank you.
And these are the numbers right here.
Can I have a comment on that?
Hi Lisa.
I can't see you. Yes, Lisa, go ahead.
Um, despite what Steve and Irene say, I work in the elementary school, and you cannot just quit out falafel and black bean salsa and expect participation to increase with the younger kids. It, that's not how they operate. Chicken nuggets, yes, but, you know, the healthy stuff, no. Um, we offered a new item on the menu today, which, uh, great middle school staff was kind enough yesterday to send us over some advanced samples. And our, our school, we cut it up into bite-sized pieces and offered it to any student and school board member that happened to be in, in the cafeteria yesterday. And kids were asking for seconds on the sample. They liked the new food item. And our participation today with a brand-new food item went to fifty-four percent, and we hover, you know, on a good day, in around fifty percent. So it, it can be done. It's a lot of work, but it can be done.
Thank you, Lisa.
Can, can I just make a comment as well?
Uh, yes.
Irene, I'm Irene, the coordinator at the high school. Some of these changes look like huge changes to you, and they're not very huge changes. We made a change last week, saying that you can no longer buy à la carte breakfast items at the high school. We were selling thirty breakfasts a day. We're now selling a hundred and fifty breakfasts a day, by shifting those from à la carte to breakfast, which may not seem like a big deal to you-
Right.
-but it means that we now get federal money for those breakfasts. So some of these changes are tiny little things that may look big, but they're very easy changes to make.
Yeah, can I, can I, I, I think I can-
Steve, go ahead.
I think I can give some clarity on some of these questions you brought in. Um, you made a great point, that a lot of, a lot of situations that happen within schools is just how you market what you sell. If you're selling an à la carte item, for an example, it's, your, your profit margin is minimal at best, whereas if you package it as a reimbursed item, you're gonna get a lot more money, because you're getting your reimbursed money and you're getting a lot better profit margin on that product. As Irene explained that, they were selling à la carte items for breakfast, instead of selling a packaged breakfast, whereas you're getting that reimbursement. So you're, you're doubling your money right there, and I think you went up from thirty breakfasts to a hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Multiply that by a hundred and eighty days, one change. Secondly, if you really look at a, I, I've worked for management companies, I work for independents, so I, I know the in and outs of proposals on both ends. And you really have to look closely at these, at these proposals, because a lot of times they're taking money from you all year long. And then in the end, they're saying, well, here's your bottom line. And when I looked at putting the proposal together for the South Burlington District, I also looked at your infrastructure. And I put a considerable amount of, amount of money into that for equipment. If you're gonna move forward and cook healthy food, you need the proper equipment to do so. And secondly, I found in this district that you provide such a great dining experience for your elementary school, your middle school, and you get to that high school, and I hate to say it, it's, it's almost like a prison atmosphere for those kids to sit in. So there again, it comes to that commitment, that, you know, you have to invest something, and if you, there again, a management company, it's hard to get that investment to move forward. So, and the last point I wanted, about the measurable gains, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Brooke on the spot here. She's with the Agency of Education, and she does the child nutrition amongst the state. And I think she could, she sees every school throughout the state, and she could definitely reference that schools that have independent programs, that run farm-to-school programs, whether they have subsidies or not. Even with my subsidy, if you took that out of the picture, I am still running a profit program. We've already extended that profit program. So I think, Brooke, you can really say that schools that commit to their independent way of working and really providing a real nutritious program are gonna succeed. And she sees it all. What are the most successful programs in the state?
It's true, they're committed, I won't put any of the management companies on the spot, but, um, we definitely see a lot more commitment from the communities, from the students.
So you're saying that we have efficiency problems?
Absolutely. You have lots of problems, absolutely.
We do that.
Awesome.
And you know, just to be clear with, with, with the members of the community who are here, I don't know, must be around two thousand, it'll now for a bond issue, with the idea that we would do some, some significant improvements in the high school cafeteria. And for reasons that are very complex, we, we never did that. But we know that, that, that the cafeteria-
Two thousand and six.
It was two thousand and six.
It was gonna be administrative, and it was gonna be an upgrade to the, to the high school cafeteria. And we decided we didn't really need to build the-
I don't know. Prison is okay. I ate there the other day, it was okay.
And let me just be clear that, I don't, and that is no reference to the staff and the hard-working people you have here. They do a stellar job, day in and day out. So when I say, when I say problems, I mean, equipment and efficiencies that really eventually will have to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am, please identify yourself.
If I may, I'm Marissa, I'm the executive director of Hunger Free Vermont, um, and came, um, to this meeting really in support of, um, South Burlington, looking at this issue. I've worked very closely with Steve and my colleague Brooke. And one thing I really think is important for you to know, cause I've worked with schools all across the state, that when schools have taken on management companies, they've often had buyer's remorse, and that's because the initial proposal that is made by the management company is a bit more of a sales pitch than what you actually get for your money when the food, when they start providing the food in the school. And that is, in many schools who had kinda mediocre programs and were dealing with some of the budget issues South Burlington is dealing with, the, the management company came in, the food quality actually went down, and there was a number of hidden costs in the contract that weren't apparent at the beginning. So I would just, um, caution you that I think oftentimes when you get those preliminary proposals from management companies, they do look really, really rosy that you might save money, but down the road, your participation goes down and those hidden costs come into play. So I, we just, if you're looking at management companies, I would really thoroughly explore them, and perhaps talk to other schools that have gone with management companies and, as I said, had, had some buyer's remorse.
If I could just, just follow up, but I, I appreciate what Julie was just talking about and getting into some of those questions, which I think are very important, but just kind of the way I'm looking at this issue is, is first of all, the administration has presented a plan, uh, that will presumably solve the issue and will get rid of the deficit. You know, we're perhaps skeptical, but that's what we should be. We should be skeptical. But some of the questions, biggest questions I had, were just answered in the exchange about participation component. That's where I was most skeptical, but I've got a little more assurances. I'm looking at it as, all right, the administration has made this recommendation, and I'm looking at it through the prism of, well, is that the recommendation I would make myself? Well, it doesn't really matter. It's, is that recommendation rational? I, is it a reasonable recommendation? And, and I, and I think that it is. Uh, but I was digging a little bit further, a little bit earlier, uh, getting into the whole subsidizing issue, uh, that I'm trying to sort out, you know, what is really part of the enterprise fund being redundant, going back to getting nutritious calories to our children so they can perform? You know, that's, that's really the core purpose, my understanding, of the enterprise fund. That's what, that's what the parents and the federal government's paying for. We have to make sure that that's happening, uh, on a, a break-even manner. But if there are other components, if there are other things that we are doing that are extra, that are meeting our ends, you know, separately from making sure that kids are fed, you know, that, that's the kind of thing that would, to me, justify potentially subsidizing the endeavor. You know, that's not where we are today. We've been presented with a plan that the administration says this is the plan that will get us there, and, and it seems reasonable to me, though it's something we should definitely be monitoring very closely.
I second that, Martin. I would like to look at that as we move forward. Um, you know, because, you know, looking at all the, the slides, I mean, there was, there were clear connections made to the ends, and that's an education, educational component, our district's ends.
So-
So just really looking at and sort of separating out, what is nutrition, what is nutrition services, and then what goes above and beyond that as an educational endeavor to meet our ends. And, you know, I know that that, we've already done our budget and, and all of that, but moving forward, it'd be good to know more about that.
Again, that's, 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 I think, a reasonable charge by the Board, is for me and the administration to look at, you know, what are, we'll say, the core components of nutrition service, enterprise fund, and are there any things currently within that would be under the, well, I'll say, the topic or heading of curriculum? You know, you know, specific curriculum delivering, deliverables, those types of things. And, you know, there may be some discussion on where those should reside, but we, we can certainly provide that too.
Well, I, I would just say that cost accounting is, uh, is as much of an art as a science. Um, and, and, you know, there are some places where there are judgment calls to be made that bring the art into play, but I think it's very important for us to be as clear and as accurate as we can be, for the reason that I mentioned earlier, which is that we don't wanna kid ourselves about what we're doing. We may make choices to spend taxpayer dollars to subsidize an important program, um, but we wanna make choices. We don't want those choices to be made for us by the way we measure things on our chart of accounts.
We need more information.
That's just not, that's just not meeting our responsibility to taxpayers. Yes ma'am?
Um, my name is Cindy Reigert, and I have two kids in the school, and I haven't heard anybody address tonight possible issues surrounding food waste. And I know there's certain guidelines for, that the federal government sends down to all the schools, um, and it sounds like, you know, there's also monies that come from the federal government, based upon how you plan your meals to the kids and things like that. But I'm wondering, you know, I see the kids put them in recycling bins and containers, and we compost things, and that's all wonderful. I'm glad to see that in the schools, but can there be a different way of looking at food waste to also cut your bottom lines? That may or may not be significant, I don't know, but I know my son Austin might like two things on a whole plate of, you know, a lunch tray, and toss the rest, although he does love the parsnip fries and other nutritional things. But I think that that might be a nice, something else to consider when you're looking at this whole cost-cutting measures and go from there, so.
I'll, I'll invite the administration to address it, but I, I will say that the way in which federal, uh, support for meals comes forward does kind of encourage us to put together packages, even though some kids are not gonna eat everything that, that's on their tray, and we know that.
Can they take the, the food away from the cafeteria? Like, maybe they take an apple or something like that, they might not eat it at lunch, but can they put it back in their backpack for a school's out, or to take home? Or to eat at TA and middle school, you know, things like that?
Again, we have folks in the room that could really give you all-
I see somebody who knows the answer.
Yes.
Details.
Yes?
I think, I think all except for the middle school doesn't allow any food out of the cafeteria.
Elementary doesn't.
The elementary doesn't?
But, you know, one of the things is that we want them, we would like them to consume the calories, you know, at the time in which they have it. You know, there are things where that, what causes the reimbursable meal, there are procedures around that. And if they, if they take it but don't consume it, it can't, you know, there's rules about putting it back onto the line to try to reduce waste. So there's a lot of specific rules, you know, about that. But I, we hear you. I think if we can cut down what goes into the waste, and perhaps be really clear on, you know, what we, what we prepare, you know, is really an important metric that could help us, so. It's a good, good point, I agree.
I'm going to just intervene on the last point you just made, David. I am Madeline Nunsio, I am the main cook for middle school. Um, and this has been a big issue for us, especially with the federal guidelines that have come in. And for parents who are here, just so you're aware, it's been a challenge for us to understand what has to be provided to fit those federal guidelines, so that we do get a reimbursable meal. Once that, that tray leaves our, our line on the cafeteria, cafeteria line, obviously if it's gone out as a reimbursable meal, we are getting paid for that money, whether the child eats it or not. Of course, we're trying to encourage that a child eats the rainbow and gets to sample things that they don't normally sample, but you're right. These are kids, they're gonna eat what they want. I can say that I've seen kids try through sample cups, tasting, you know, new things that they haven't experienced before, or because a friend has tasted it, peer influence has made it work. We had the taste tests go out on the chicken yesterday, and all of a sudden, the sales increased. That being said, from our standpoint behind that line, when we are preparing food, we have done everything we can to cut down the amount of waste, which ultimately goes to our budget and cost. So even though we have to make a certain amount of food available because it is a federal requirement, playing with this, we've kind of learned what they're going to take and what they're not gonna take, and we've pulled back a little bit, so that we are trying to limit our out cost. So we are aware of this, but it has been a kind of give-and-take learning experience for all of us.
Okay. I think we've probably gone as far as we can go tonight with this. I don't think the Board is ready to- I don't think the board is ready to act on any of these recommendations, and as I said earlier, it's an area where the board could choose to intervene, but if it doesn't choose to intervene, the administration is fully empowered to do what it, what it has recommended to us to do. So I don't think this board's attention to this problem is over at this point, but I think what we can do with it tonight is probably over. And I, I appreciate your being here tonight. Sabrina, I'm going to give you one more chance.
I just have a question, because I'm confused.
Yeah.
Okay. So the Nutritional Services is an enterprise fund?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm actually kind of confused here, because I heard people talking about the budget and, you know, being sensitive to, you're asking us to have an eight percent increase on our taxes, and, but if it's an enterprise system, it sounded to me like it was separate from the general fund.
We've only lost a half a million dollars on this enterprise fund...
Yeah, I know.
...in the last five years, which the taxpayers have paid.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So there's no money that drops into our laps magically. We get it from the taxpayers, from the federal government or the state government, or from the, from the costs of meals. It's pretty simple, really.
And actually, can you just, you might want to understand the point that if we're taking money from the general fund to support nutrition services, we're taking money away from other programs?
Well, yes, I understand that basic, that basic thing. Okay.
So that's the way it works. We have to pay for everything somehow, and the South Burlington taxpayer is sadly the payer of last resort. That's the truth, for us. So with that, yes Diane?
Yeah, I would just like to be clear, Rich, are you saying that the administration can, these recommendations, like the yogurt machine and the changing different things, they can go, those...
I mean, I think they're all within, to the extent they're in the budget, they're within the authority, we've already delegated to the superintendent. We can step in and say, don't, or we can step in and say, do something different. But if we take no action, the superintendent has the ability to do the things that he's recommended to us.
One of the things that...
John?
Things like the yogurt machine, we'll come back to you, because it's a five-year commitment, we don't have the authority to do that.
That is beyond the superintendent's authority. And the other, the other thing that I would say, just really more for, for the information of my fellow board members, is that I've engaged in a conversation with David and John about the, the sort of accrual of this deficit in the nutritional fund, Nutritional Services Fund, Enterprise Fund, which I don't think is a very useful accounting practice. So at some point, I think we need to find a way to get that balance to zero so that the program is expected to support itself, not to pay back the district money that frankly, I don't think it ever can. But we're talking, we've scheduled a conversation with the accountant about how to do that, March 5th is...
March 5th, right.
Yeah?
So my other thought was, as you implement some of these changes, David, is there any way that you could track participation and just kind of report back to us? You know, whether, you know, as you make the changes, you know, are you seeing an increase?
Well, I think, again, there's been, some of that has been shared, you know, Irene talked about that, Lisa talked a little bit about that, probably missing a few there, but...
We see the number of meals we send, so, but I think...
But it's good information for us as we think about good food and menu options and increased participation. It provides data that what we're doing is working.
And I really would like, when, to go back to the index that you mentioned and learn some of the details about that, and think about whether we could set up some indices of the overall health of our students that we could look at over time to say, you know, is, is the health of our students improving, or is it getting worse, with the efforts that we're, that we're making? I think that's just really important for us to do.
So Rich, we have, we have asked for some more information.
We have.
Is it possible to, to set a date to talk about those things?
We know that it is.
Especially because our whole board is not here tonight?
Yeah. We can, and we're going to, we're going to talk about the next agenda, you know, after we finish the next item anyway, so that's probably the appropriate time to do that. And I don't need to say that to try and hide the wall from anybody, but we do have regular processes of doing these things, and, and it will be on our website as far as when we go back to the subject. Again, I have a feeling it will be on our next meeting.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Can I just ask one clarifying question?
Sure.
And I don't know if it got lost in translation from you up there or me back here.
Yeah.
But just to clarify, so in terms of keeping ourselves apprised to movements and decisions, it'll be on the website?
Yeah. These meetings, in fact, are on the web.
Right.
So, yes, and, and our agenda will clearly indicate when we get back to talking about nutritional services again, and we will come back to this conversation, I think, within a month, I'm sure.
And that'll be prior to you folks making a decision?
That would probably be the time when we would make any decisions that we make, but we're in a mode where we don't have to make any decisions in order for the recommendations that have been made to be adopted, with the exception of some specifics such as lease agreements, what John mentioned about the, where there are some financial consequences that are beyond the superintendent's authority alone.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for attending this section of our meeting. Stephanie, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, just again, for clarifying questions, just so I understand what the charge is from the board, since we have all been engaged in acquiring this information, I mean, clearly this was not an RFP process.
Right.
No.
So we literally had to go out and use resources in order to get a proposal and work within the bounds that we had, that you were charged to work under. So if you're actually looking for more information, since, you know, we did, many people volunteered their time to drill down with this information and the numbers and crunch the numbers, and, you know, if there isn't something that, if there's something that the board needs specifically that we can help maybe shed some light on, it would be helpful to know what that is so that it's, it's clear and we can get whatever information we can get in order to, to bring comfort to the board in terms of, of making a decision definitively.
So David has the questions the board members have asked that haven't been answered to this point, and David can share that information with the folks who have played the advisory role here, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, so it's...
All right, well, as I started to say, thank you very much for, for being here and sharing your, your interest in this subject. It is a very important subject. You have our attention. And with that, we'll probably take a moment to break. So we'll stand in recess for five minutes.
Okay.
All right, we'll go back to, back in the session.
Okay.
And the next item on our agenda is the three to five year planning discussion. And I see we have a new document on our desk.
So let me just start out with this, and, you know, this has been, this has been, I would say, a desire of ours, and I think of yours, and we've had a fair amount of feedback from community members about looking at this type of work. So John, actually, you know, you and I have talked, he's put a lot of thought into this, and I think just come up with a reasonable kind of next step that I think will be important for you to look at, review, ask questions, and then allow us to kind of really make sure we're, we're clear on our move forward next step. So I'm going to ask John just to kind of walk you through this. I know you had one in your pack, and it basically provided some of the meat of the proposal, but let me have him just kind of walk you through what we're thinking and then go from there.
At the January 9th board meeting, Elizabeth summed up what she felt the board wanted from the administration as far as a five-year plan, and so I want to get that on record. This will be used in advance of specific planning for next year's budget, to educate the public about expectations, to help us innovate, to drive efficiencies, and to provide the level of education the residents of South Burlington both is known for and expects. And I, I looked at that and I thought, boy, this has really helped frame this, because I think we did a pretty good job last year of projecting what would happen in the budget process for the FY14 budget that we just have sent to the voters. But, as far as projecting where we would be, but we didn't have strategies over the long term to address healthcare, and the loss of federal funds was such a shock that if we had a five-year plan, we might have done a little better with it. And I'm not saying we didn't do well, but I think this five-year plan will help us. And we, we will ask, our current Citizens Budget Group has been great to ask, to see if they really want to meet year-round, because it's quite a commitment, and some of our people who contribute do a lot of, lot for us. But that's the first step then, is to see if they want to be there, and then recruit others who might be interested. And it's a, it's a, there, I'm sure there's people in the community that would be interested, so if you have any names, I'll ask the administrators to see about that. And I want, we suggest, David and I discussed about doing the work according to the following schedule, to at least have a monthly meeting with the Citizens Group and have periodic reports back to the school board, so there's progress going on and we can stay on task so that everybody's pretty like-minded on this, with the goal of having a five-year forecast ready in September before the budget starts for next year. So that's, that's our goal. Another thing we would need to do is select our format and the context of the report. The, on the second page is a list of websites, but the Government Finance Officers Association has a lot about planning long-term municipal side and, and school districts. So that's a really good source to use. And another interesting thing is the state of Ohio requires their school districts to have a five-year plan. It's actually a current budget and for succeeding years, and on an ongoing basis. And I've looked at some of those, I was born there in Ohio, I looked at my hometown, and it's, it's interesting that they're doing that on a regular basis, so every, every school district. So we don't have to invent the format, and that's a good thing. We also, in, in your packet, put down key factors that we need to talk about, consider in planning for our, for our five-year plan. The enrollment forecast being a huge one, because not only is the services we provide to that many children, but it's a revenue driver for us, and, and on and on. So I think that that's the general gist of our plan. We discussed if a board member wanted to be on the committee, and I don't know how you feel about that, that's something we could discuss tonight. But wanted to set the, set the heart of what we want to do, and then leave some, some, a shell of how we're going to get there.
Okay. Comments or questions?
I have just, I guess, two, two quick points from looking through here. You talked about capital planning and moving of all fifth grades to FHTMS. Would you potentially add on that longer-term consideration consolidation of elementary schools? Just as, just to flag that as a...
I would, and I think other, under, other issues, and I think, although, I want to be really clear with the board, you know, these are, these are things that we'll, we're looking at and considering, right? There's a lot of others, I think, on there, which would include, you know, complete consolidation. So, again, I, I think we, we just tried to highlight some of the capital planning components that are, what I would say is that's some bigger items.
Right.
And again, it's not necessarily would, would, would be this either, you know, we're again, looking at a variety of options.
I do have a concern about what it says in the document, because I do think that, you know, it's a public document, and probably on the end of our website, and some member of the community might come along and say, oh, the school board's decided to do this. So I think maybe some amendment to the document should be made...
Look into...
To make clear that these are possibilities, not...
We can do that.
Not decisions that is...
So noted, we'll make that change, change it that way.
Right.
I also wondered about the staff pension plan, John, and whether that, you know how the city does that as a committee, has a committee that reviews that?
Oh, right, right.
I wonder if that should be something that, not that you don't review it perfectly well, but I'm just...
No, no, we should...
I'm just wondering if that should be something that we have some committee reviewing on a, I don't know, annual base, I don't know how often...
I agree, I agree. I think that historically, it just was in the business office, the business manager, but to have other interested, the 300 employees have a voice in, in the investment and oversight, that, that's important.
So Julia, were you saying, under staff pension plan, this, this one bullet area, were you, were you thinking of having, adding some clarity to the committee?
Or even having the, maybe having this committee review that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that maybe that's the answer, rather than have a separate committee.
Yeah, I think...
But the city has that packed committee, which reviews their pension plan, and I'm not, I'm not saying that's the way to go, but I'm just saying...
What we're, we're, and I think this is a good clarification, because what we've tried to do is identify, well, I'll say, the, the bigger, the big buckets.
Okay.
What, what's within the buckets and how those buck, how those items are managed within them, there's differences, right? Under the capital planning bucket, we've got these things, and again, I agree that possible, these are all possible ideas. How we then track them in a, in a financial plan, you know, will become the next step to say, okay, that's the item, and then...
Okay.
Here it is now, and how do we, how do we do that? So this was really just some brainstorming with you folks, which is good, on, do we have the right, you know, the right thinking? Because we want to be able to show you this in a, again, a three to five year or more plan that says, these are the big areas, and here and now, and here in the future, what it, you know, how, how can we do this, to provide clarity.
You know, one of the things I, I was thinking, and I don't know if this is part of the, the vision of the community group that will participate, but there might be some in the community that want to participate in one of these, like one area, and is there room for that? Like, someone might have a particular interest or expertise in capital planning, someone else might know a lot about data or enrollment, or would the expectation be to cover everything?
I think individuals, I mean, part of the, part of the, and this is the same thing we get into with budget advisory, is it's really hard to come into it if you're not, because we spend a lot of time about what's the structure we're looking, you know, that we want to provide the board, in this case, a three to five year plan, how do we want it built, how are we, you know, then we're going to start to travel through some of these things. I think we could always open up to guests, you know, individuals who are going to provide an expertise. The problem is, is if, if it goes beyond that, then, you know, you come in and provide expertise, but then you say, oh, I don't really like how this is set up, and you want to, you know, somebody turns it on its end.
Right.
So we really want to have, you know, a, a core group of participants that are going to see it from A to, you know, A to Z, but I think your comment around having what we might say, experts or, you know, individuals that want to provide clarity to a specific area, I think we would be open to say, hey, we got someone who's going to talk to us about, you know, and we would do that.
Can I suggest, as far as reaching out for a participant, that we get somebody from either the city offices or the planning commission, somebody who can be more tuned in to finding the data as far as potential growth in South Burlington, you know, where there are projects that are approved, and the projections, et cetera. I'm not sure if that's from somebody from the planning department, under Paul Connor, or if that's...
Yeah, good, Martin, city office.
But if, I mean, if enrollment really is such a critical factor to try to get a handle on, I think that over there, they'd have much more knowledge and expertise.
So there's some confluence between it.
And maybe we'll have a more cooperative endeavor with the city.
Yeah, I think that's good. We can certainly ask, you know, they obviously have us on participating with a variety of them, and I'm sure they'd be honored to...
The city assessor too, if you remember, the steering committee, Dan Fleming, asked about projected home values, you know, the market, and I know this, the city assessor would have some of that foresight, so that'd be good.
Yeah, he may have the home value and such, but would he know where the city's headed in, in four or five years as far as...
Well, that would be more Paul Connor, like you said, yeah, yeah.
I think frankly, the city was surprised at the extent of the population growth in the last decade, and I don't think they had a good enough handle on it to project to us that... And I don't think they had a good enough handle on it to project to us that although we were going to see a huge, large increase in population, we'd still see a small decline in students, in student population.
Right.
Sort of anti-intuitive, but not when you realize what the age group of the, of the population was. But I think they're probably getting a better handle on that too as we go.
Right, they're, with all their efforts right now, they're.
And so if you want a board member on this, I'm guessing from what you just said, you don't want us to take turns at those meetings. You want some continuity.
Well, you know, I think in part, I mean, what we've set up here, and again, I think it's right to ask the question, I, my thinking is I would actually rather that you not participate in that you're a participant in this level, and we're, we're bringing you back. And I think it creates a much more delineated line of communication from me to you as opposed to, because it's going to be hard for any one of you to then represent the direction of it. I think it becomes confusing.
I think we're better off frankly to have five fresh sets of eyes looking at the product of another group.
Yeah.
Than to have sort of a cross fertilization of what's happening.
And that's kind of why, that's kind of why we've set, you know, the, you know, that we're going to have a couple of, you know, three meetings, and then we're going to bring it back to you. And I think we'll need to spend a, you know, some time on, on the review of that. But that would be my recommendation. I, if one of you wanted to sit in, again, if you had an expertise and wanted to provide, I certainly could, could accept that, you know, certainly about. I, I also know that you, you know, have, you've got a lot of meetings, and I'd like to have your, your numbers that you do have.
Or as fresh as can be. Anything else?
Good, we appreciate feedback, and we'll make those additions and changes, and we'll start working.
Okay.
Thank you.
That takes us to setting the agenda for our sixth meeting. Which is the first meeting after the election.
Right.
Okay.
Somebody have it in front of them?
Yeah, I'm looking at it now.
Should we have a, something on here for the budget, just in case?
Yes, I think we should have.
Can I always keep it on?
Review of budget election results and discussion. Hopefully you can add celebration, but we won't put that on the agenda.
No, it's not, personally.
No. If we have review, if we have review, we can do it either in discussion.
Review of budget.
Budget vote results.
Okay.
The audit report and management letter will, I have the audit report, the management letter will be here Friday or Monday this next week. We'll definitely get it to you as soon as I get it, but I wonder if we want to put it on here or wait till the next meeting.
Looks pretty full already.
Yeah.
So one of the things on here that you see that I don't want you to, number eight, is part of the Secretary of Education's charge to Winuski was to look at a study that involved, you know, the collaboration between the Burlington and South Burlington, or neighboring areas. So I would like an action on this, is I think it's, it would be right for us to consider their findings, you know, just to allow that study to happen essentially. It doesn't mean you have to say yes or no, but it's really allowing the study to happen. It's under the Act 156 merger.
What will we have to do?
Basically, we don't, we don't have to do anything except to say yes to the, to the, allowing the, the study to happen, to.
What is it involved?
It involves really looking at feasibility currently Winuski faces and the resources available to students and how that might be better provided. And so is it, a, a direction might be that they ought to just do X with Burlington, part with South Burlington, and then maybe.
Is it specific to us or?
Burlington?
Burlington.
Yeah, again.
It's the neighboring districts.
Right.
The bordering contiguous districts.
What the secretary said is given the viability of, you know, of Winuski when the superintendent left, he, he said, only on an interim basis will you hire, and directed to do a study, which is this, which is actually under the 156 component. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's right for us to be part of the study. It doesn't bind you to anything, and it may be, again, information that helps us, you know, look to our future as well.
The last time we met with Winuski to discuss this subject, the chair of the school board nearly had, had only one question, which was, what's your tax rate? And he said, then we're not merging with you. It may be a short study, but.
So the study hasn't been done yet?
No, no.
Because the way it's written, it's.
Yeah, it looks like.
No, it's really to enter, begin that.
Like.
And we, if you don't want to be part of it, then Burlington can be part of it, so.
I mean.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll talk more about it. I just, it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
The intent was not to talk about it now, but just to give you an update.
Right, and I just want to understand what I'm considering, that's all.
Can I just add one variable, and you don't have to pay for it? There's a $20,000 grant for Act 156. It covers consultant fees and legal analysis to do that. And I did about 30 of them before I came.
Just out there for us to grab, huh? But we spent around that, so it's revenue neutral to us. Okay, we're getting too much of the depth there.
Just, the, it should be noted that the meeting will be at Orchard School.
Oh, yes. You better pull my.
Oops.
Will you remind us of that?
Yeah, Orchard School Cafeteria.
It's always Orchard the day after the election.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
Will you remind us? Yeah, thank you.
And so audit report will put on there. You want to keep, you want to have nutritional services on there again?
Yes.
But not on the 6th probably, maybe on the 20th?
I don't think it's realistic to add it to the 6th.
No.
I expect to do anything. Julie?
I think that's fine. 20th is fine.
So we'll put it March 20th and open it back up for discussion.
Okay.
With feedback that that will give to you. So audit and review of budget vote results will be added. Okay?
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure my calendar hasn't got me going to the wrong place that day.
This is a hefty budget or a hefty agenda is.
Yeah, what can you take off there, David? Do we need to have more three-to-five-year financial planning discussion?
Let's see, if you set the charge forward, probably not. We probably could take that off. We have enough charge to move forward.
Yeah.
Given what you just have given us. So we could take that off, which was what number?
It's number 11.
It was 11.
11. You got to have that off. Let's look at what else.
Will we be ready for treatment of staff? I don't like to postpone it, but.
Yeah, again, this is still, we're in the wait phase. Now, let me find out. If it's ready, I'd like to get it done.
Yeah.
When are we, when are we going to get the asset protection report?
We.
A week from tomorrow.
Are we doing that by, we're not doing that, we're all doing that? We're not doing that by committee?
No, we, we were doing it together.
I, I think that.
Unless you want to have a, I mean.
Well, it's, we've done this.
I haven't booked people out that way on a, on a regular basis because it's just, it loads your time, but it's often better to have a separate committee go through it and, or se, you know, four members.
So we're getting it, what's the date we're getting it?
We get it a week.
From February 28th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's just that particular report, the last couple of times we've gotten it, it's been, I mean, it's been pretty good, and there's not been a lot.
Yeah.
That we've had to discuss on it.
It's true.
I mean, it's not a report where it's constantly changing. So I just don't think we need a half hour on it.
Okay.
I think probably more like 10 minutes.
We can make that change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we don't have to step through every, it's just like looking for anything that raises red flags.
Well, you're right, and so maybe we don't need a committee, we can just read it.
Yeah, I really, yeah, I really don't think.
So we'll put it, we'll, we'll, again, we'll redo it again in, but 10 minutes.
And if that, it ends up that there's some big red flag, just we'll continue at the next meeting, so.
You know, nine will, nine doesn't need to take a lot of time. I just want to provide you with the information. I mean, we, we went over some of the, our results in our budget presentation, but we should spend a little bit more time connecting it back to our work on our ends. So, yeah, but that, that can, that can be fairly quick. Again, we should get it out to our community in a timely way, I believe, as well.
We'll be okay.
Yeah.
Can we just, Emily needs to go home and go to bed before school tomorrow, and I just want you to, I want you all to know that she's presenting our budget to one of her classes tomorrow. And also, what else are you doing tomorrow?
Tomorrow from 12 to 4 in the high school lobby will be a voter registration drive.
Fabulous. They've done a great job at the high school around getting voters, students, and understanding their commitments, so, kind of great charge there, and much appreciated.
All right, well, thank you, Emily. We'll see you next time, I think.
I hope, yeah.
Good luck tomorrow.
So are we planning, did, did we say we're going to plan to do food on the, at our next following meeting, March 20th?
20th. That's what I have to know, that we just bring back.
Can we get San Francisco?
No, that was a kid, that was a joke.
You're going to, you're going to try it. You're going to take me to a cafeteria for personal.
That's right.
Have lunch and then let's try it.
I don't think our high school cafeteria is like a prison, just so you know, because I ate there the other day.
I don't either. I don't think we're like a prison.
Well, it's pretty outdated.
Yeah, but it's all.
That's the point.
What you need to do is get out to one of the elementary school cafeterias, not more high school, middle school.
We've been to one, right?
Look at Lisa at Central.
We haven't gone to.
I could ask that the service is top-notch there, at Central.
The service is top-notch at the high school.
Well, I haven't had a chance to eat there yet.
We're digressing.
Yes, Chairman.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
That's my job.
But all good stuff.
So that means we probably don't have anything new to add to future agenda items?
I, I do, actually.
Oh, darn.
You do have climate coming back, so that's going to come back.
What do you got there, Martin?
Well, once the dust settles after the election, primarily for the city council, wherever that's heading, I think we should have on here me giving an update on the zoning committee and all.
Oh, your form-based code.
The form-based code, just to kind, it probably, I can keep it very short, but I think you guys should be in the loop, given that I'm spending six, seven hours a week, it seems, doing this stuff. Thank you very much for roping me into that.
We're so proud of you.
And thank you, Martin.
I just want to say with the future agenda items, if I should prevail during the election, as in past years, I'd be happy to kind of get together with David to look at the.
Try to knock them off.
Annual agenda, because I think everyone could just set, you know, put their numbers and their priorities, and I can help with that.
That's a great idea.
You know, I think at some.
Get some of these things off our plate.
You've got a lot going on. It may be something of discussion that you can think about where we may take either a half a day somewhere.
We talked about that.
I, I don't know where might be best in your schedules, but it might be a better way to try to, you know, advance ourselves in some of these, because some of these are really important to you, and to have them on in the future, like Martin said, you know, respectfully on the work he's been doing, it's kind of an unfortunate thing that that information can't get out and get, get back to.
We should try to find, if you, can you send us dates?
I can, I, if, if you're interested in doing that, I.
Yeah, I think probably David could use some guidance from us about what kind of half-day.
Your month of March is really busy, you know, you want to go to April, are you looking at, you know, you want to do something right at the conclusion of, you know, the school year, you know, do.
Are we willing to do something during a work day or a weekend day or a long evening? What, what do you think about those issues?
A half-day retreat thing or. And then Diana and I, if you give some guidance, I'm, I'm fine to work with Diana on organizing or putting out a priority list and.
Can we do it like post-budget, like sometime in March? Because it seems like there's going to be.
If it's post-budget.
There's going to be a lot of issues.
Yeah, if it's not post-budget, we'll have a pretty busy month anyway.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about this on the 6th.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's talk about it on the 6th.
Okay, yeah, let's think about that. What, when would you prefer to?
You guys need to just kind of think about it.
Put in a half-day to try and knock some things off. I mean, for me, it's kind of rather do it on the weekend, to be honest, but.
Well, let's, again, I'm asking, again, doesn't mean we can't. If that's, if we can't do it that way, then we'll come back and try to keep, put them out, put in order still.
Yeah, okay. That takes us to the minutes of February 6th. Are there any comments or questions about the minutes of February 6th?
Nope.
Any objection to it being approved as submitted?
Nope.
They're approved without objection.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda, which includes a retirement.
Again, I would just add that, you know, anytime there's a retirement, I'd be depend on your behalf, kind of appreciation and, you know, again, just a respectful letter from the board on.
I think that would be appropriate, yes.
So I will do that, I've done that for you in the past, and I'll see you to do that.
I take it there's no objection to consent agenda?
No.
It's approved.
Thank you.
Accounts payable orders, I don't think there are any act items in that group.
Nope.
Okay. Announcements.
I think you have announcements at your side. I won't read through all of them. We had, again, celebrations, and I'll put these up there. A lot of you have seen a variety of things. Champlain Valley Regional Art Show, again, going to have displays in the mall. South Burlington High School Social Studies Teacher Christine, Kristen, Krista Huling was recently named to the State Board, or I should say probably the Agency of Education Board, State Board of Education. She's a teacher at the high school, that's a nice piece for you to know. And then the DACA students, and again, you can read through all of the competition winners. Lynn Amy, it might be nice for you to get a chance to meet her and some of the students, and you can look at all of the, the folks that participated and some of the, kind of the recognition work that they had done. It's, she was extremely proud of the students, and, yeah, I want to just, I want to make sure that you saw that.
Yeah.
Again, so many other things that are going on, and our, our websites, our newsletters, home, and this multitude of, the other paper, there's all kinds of things going on, so. That's all I have.
All right.
Can I just ask one? Is there going to be one more reminder sent out from the administration, or should there be, encouraging people to vote?
Yep, on the vote, yep.
Okay.